All right, welcome. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities and Energy Emergency Response is now reconvened. The first half of our hearing was conducted this morning at 9:00 and was recessed at 12:00 this afternoon. And this hearing is on the Guam Cannabis Industry Act, a bill that would legalize adult-use cannabis for those aged 21 years and over. And with that, I'd like to recognize my colleagues who are here, beginning to the left, Senator Pito Turahy, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Rajin Bisco Lee, Senator James Moylan, and Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. I'd like to call up whoever has signed up to testify. Please join us up at the front. All right. Is anyone else here to testify on behalf of the measure? Please join us at the table. Okay. So we can go ahead and we'll begin with Andrea Pellicani. Andrea, please go ahead and introduce yourself first before you begin your testimony.
First of all, I'm sorry it says Senator Joseph Augustine because for whatever reason I thought this was the Appropriations Committee, so I didn't correct that. Senator, Chairman Rajel. But I am Andrea Pellicani and I'm a managing partner of Grassroots Guam. And I'm here to pledge our support for Bill 32-35. Grassroots Guam is in full support of Senator Clint Rajel's bill, which would decriminalize and regulate the production and distribution of cannabis on Guam. We will be discussing why support of this bill is important as well as making some recommendations to improve the foundation that this policy provides, which could potentially bring about unprecedented fiscal and social change to our island. One, Guam has already decriminalized cannabis. Most people do not realize that possession of under an ounce of cannabis is a violation punishable by citation of $100. This is already in our law. This has been in our books since 1980-something. Most people don't realize that Guam has already decriminalized cannabis. It's a non-classified offense. It's not a misdemeanor. It's just a violation, the same level as a speeding ticket. Even former Governor Cavill's legal counsel, who worked on the governor's legalization bill, was completely unaware of the decriminalization of cannabis on Guam even after she drafted a bill to legalize cannabis. However, the manufacture, distribution, and sale of cannabis is still criminal. Our laws are upside down and do not make sense. Essentially, illegal supply is filling a decriminalized demand, creating our very own, very robust, black market for cannabis. Lethal overdoses from cannabis as of 2019, we're still at zero. Prohibition is conclusively ineffective, and turning a blind eye does not make it go away. According to the U.N. World Drug Report in 2013, Guam is rated third highest in cannabis consumption per capita worldwide, just behind our neighbors in the CNMI in Palau. That is what prohibition has achieved. I can't name one positive benefit socially or fiscally from prohibition. What I can say is that prohibition has moved billions of dollars through our economy in the back pockets of drug dealers and provided an unsafe situation for our communities with rural houses located in the hearts of our villages, as noted by criminal cases that have been published. On the next page, you'll see a chart here. This is in no way, shape, or form a scientific study, but if you want to talk about what our black market could potentially look like if we were to sort of put some unscientific measurables to it. We do know that 18.3% is, according to the U.N. World Drug Report, is our consumption. And if we assumed, made some assumptions on how much they would consume per year, some medical on the high end, some social and recreational on the lower end, and we found sort of a number in the middle, we made an assumption there to calculate approximately 2,600 to 5,200 pounds moves through our black market. That's a conservative number. I would probably say it's more than 6,000 pounds. The estimated market value is based at $10,000 per pound. That would be $26 to $52 million moving in our black market economy, again, on the conservative side. The potential GRT collections for that would be $1.3 million to $2.6 million. The potential excise tax could be $3.9 to $7.8 million. And corporate taxes subject to IRC 280E with no standard deduction, so cannabis businesses wouldn't have standard deductions. We have no idea what that will be. Again, these are conservative numbers based on a single transaction per pound. That doesn't even take into account when the pound gets grammed out, when it gets sent to the manufacturer, it gets turned into oil, that all gets taxed. The excise tax only gets taxed, should only get taxed once, at the very first level. But after that, you still have GRT, and you still have every cannabis business on the distribution chain, subject to corporate taxes. Again, the tax rate for a cannabis business is much higher than any other business. Between 60 to 70% of their total income is taxable, corporate taxes. Opposition to cannabis policy reform is support for this continued effort to happen, to continue moving this through our black market. And it's, turning a blind eye enables this robust economy to continue on unchecked. Prohibition clearly does not take cannabis off the streets. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was what recreational uses, because I hear this term often used, but this is an adult-use bill. So I want to clarify what adult-use means. Medical use is not a casual term to define how people use cannabis or what they use it for. Medical use is a legal term defined by the law as the acquisition, cultivation, possession, processing, including development of related products such as food, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfer, transportation, sale, distribution, dispensing, or administration, or laboratory testing of cannabis, as well as the possession of cannabis paraphernalia for the benefit of qualified patients in the treatment of debilitating medical conditions or the symptoms thereof. Now, what is a debilitating medical condition? That means cancer, glaucoma, multiple sclerosis, damage to the nervous tissue of the spinal cord with objective neurological indication of intractable spasticity, epilepsy, positive status for human immunodeficiency virus, or acquired immune deficiency syndrome, admitted into hospice care, post-traumatic stress disorder, rheumatoid arthritis, or similar chronic autoimmune inflammatory disorders, and then number 10, any other medical condition, medical treatment, or disease for which the qualified patient's practitioner has determined that the use of medical cannabis may provide relief. So that is legally what medical use may be. And although the 10th item provides the ability to access cannabis for a patient who may have a condition that is not listed, the current reality of our program, oncologists are denying cancer patients certifications. I've heard that from oncologists. I've heard that from cancer patients. We also have reports of two major clinics on island prohibiting their practitioners from writing certifications to patients. So based on that reality, it would be extremely difficult for patients who have other conditions to get certified. Other conditions that would not qualify as medical, when we talk about medical versus recreational, diabetes, chronic pain, fibromyalgia, ALS, Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, sleep disorders, ADHD, autism, bipolar disorder, chronic depression, eating disorders, harm reduction for drug addiction, asthma, and the list goes on. These are not considered medical use. Now, you tell someone with fibromyalgia that they can't have medicine, but currently our law states that. Or they have to go out and convince a doctor to tell them to find when cancer patients can't even convince their doctors to write them certifications. So recreational use, what is recreational use? It's a term invented by geniuses to depict an image of Sodom and Gomorrah, because heaven forbid we enjoy a couple of beers with friends, or a glass of wine like Jesus did, or for our elite businessmen, a whiskey and a cigar, all socially acceptable forms of recreation. But we don't say recreational whiskey, recreational wine, or recreational tobacco. So we adopt the term adult-use because this term encompasses patients that qualify for the medical program by condition but cannot find a doctor to certify them, patients that want to avoid being on a registry for fear of loss of employment or retirement from drug testing, patients who have a condition that's not on the debilitating conditions list, therapeutic use, as well as five general social recreational use, which would not include children. Now, if we take a look at, we drew up another chart, what are the major differences between our current medical laws and what an adult-use program will look like? So I kind of narrowed it down to four areas of major difference. All the other regulatory means can simply be mirrored or run parallel. The taxes would be different. Medical would be, I'm sorry, this is also 4% BPT plus, I'm sorry, what's not here is corporate tax, subject to IRC 280E. Adult-use would be 4% BPT, 15% excise tax, as well as corporate tax subject to IRC 280E. Now, dosage is also a big issue. For a medical program, there are no dosage requirements. You could make products such as Phoenix Tears would be 1 gram a day for a cancer patient, whereas typically in an adult-use program, it would be 10 milligrams per serving size. And why has that come about? We'll talk about that later, because that's like about ER room visits and how we can mitigate that. So typically, an adult-use program would adopt a 10-milligram dosage of THC per serving size. Now, you don't want to, if you're a cancer patient and you need Phoenix Tears at a gram a day, you're going to have to buy 100 doses on an adult-use market. Who can afford that? There's also a possession limit or purchase limit difference. Medical is 2 and 1/2 ounces of dried cannabis or its THC equivalent every two weeks. And on this proposed bill, it's flour up to 1 ounce, concentrate 800 milligrams THC. Again, noting it's up to 1 ounce, which, by the way, if you currently have in your possession, you would only get a speeding ticket for, a citation. So this just, basically what this does is makes the supply a legitimate regulated operation on Guam. Minors would be able to avail of medical cannabis with a certification from a doctor for adult use. They would not. The cultivation limit for her current home cultivation plan is six mature and 12 juvenile. For adult use, it would be only six plants as proposed in this bill. So I just wanted to sort of clarify, when people come up and talk about what recreational use I'm opposed, I don't think that they're aware they're opposing patients that qualify for medical program by condition but can't find a doctor, patients that want to avoid being on a registry because they work for GovGuam, and GovGuam won't protect their jobs that we've asked for four years, or a private company that won't protect their jobs. That's what we're talking about here. These are people who are included as being covered under this bill. Areas of concern, while many will tell you what they think they know the social impacts of cannabis will be, there is one place you can see for yourself. Colorado has had the longest history of legalized cannabis for adult use and has done the best job, frankly, of collecting the proper data to assess their program and evolve their regulations to mitigate some of the negative impacts. So every year, they do an annual report, and they see where their program may be failing the community, and then they change policy. And that's how it's supposed to work. I mean, isn't that how everything's supposed to work? You know, we implement a law, and then we go back and say, hey, you know what, some things aren't working, this maybe fell through the crack, we go back and fix it. And so to me, Colorado has done the best job at doing this. So they publish the study annually, and you could read it for yourself. We brought and included in our testimony, yes, I'm that person that just made the committee report like 5,000 pages long. I apologize, senators. And I apologize to all the trees that we had to damage to make the printouts, but we thought it was important. I'm not here to cherry pick data and convince you why you should believe my data over there, over anybody else's. What I want to do is allow you the tools to make the best, most informed decision. And I feel strongly that the data speaks for itself. So they've used this data to make positive policy adjustments such as lab testing requirements, dosage requirements, serving sizes for edibles, restriction on packaging so that they're not attractive to children. These are policies that came about after the fact because of their response and proactive response to the data that they've collected. So if they see emergency room visits go up, we'll say, you know, what's causing these emergency room visits? You know what? They're taking too much cannabis. So what do we do about it? Well, we lower the serving size dosage that hopefully should mitigate some of that problem. And so you'll see the numbers start to go down. All these really good policy adjustments that have happened in Colorado is because they kept track of their program. We don't have to make those mistakes. They've already made some of them for us. You'll see on our medical cannabis bill, as a part of the rules, we actually also ask to ensure that cannabis products are not attractive to children. So that already, that impact in Colorado from social use has already impacted other programs, including medical programs. So please bear in mind with this yearbook, it's not just a case study in a vacuum by year. The later studies include numbers that are results of specific changes to their program. This is what good programs are supposed to do, and it's what we hope to do here. Again, we're not going to spend too much time arguing the validity of any studies or try to discredit those who are opposed to this bill. We have included the latest reports for you, so you can review those. Areas of crime, or areas of concern that are specific top of mind for people, crime, access to children, traffic accidents or DUIs, emergency room visits, and available resources for stakeholder agencies, including law enforcement and medical facilities. So those are the major areas of concern that people have. I do have a few recommendations for the policy. I think we need a division, an entire division, a bureau within the Department of Revan Tax with funding for a division head and a full-time staff to include a budget for consultation. This is new to us, and so there isn't any reason why we can't reach out to people who have already done this over and over and over and over in all these new states that are coming up online, who know where the problems are. They know where some of the standard problems are and can help us mitigate it. So I think money should be important. Money is going to be the make or break on this bill, and money is going to be the make or break on the success of this program. We would support Director Daphne Shimizu's effort to fund, sorry, I have another typo there, to trust that she will provide good direction for the program with the funds that she would be requesting. We need to include the Department of Public Health and Social Services on the cannabis board. Eventually, the Medical Cannabis Commission should be dissolved, and eventually, they should be one board, one board. And so that's why public health should be on the cannabis, I mean, on the cannabis board. And it also should include an integration period for medical cannabis businesses to apply or come into compliance. However, the board is going to want to integrate the programs, it just should include an integration period. We should require an implementation plan be submitted to the governor to be published. Included in the plan should be a deadline to recommend policy changes to our adult-use and medical-use statutes. It's going to happen. We're going to have to change after, if this should pass, we're going to have to change some of it based on implementation or integration problems that the board will come across. The same's going to happen for medical use. It's going to happen. In order for them to integrate, some of the laws may be conflicting and will need to be adjusted. So it shouldn't be a bump in the road. Let's plan for that. Require the division, hopefully you want to create a division with full-time staff, to create a plan to require the collection of data from stakeholders and for division staff or BSP to be accountable for publishing this data annually. Again, Colorado has done the best job of this so far. We should review their current yearbook and sort of mimic or mirror some of the data that they require and how they collect it. We should require stakeholder agencies to submit a fiscal impact statement annually to the board to monitor their needs, which will include Guam Police Department, Department of Agriculture, EPA, BSP, DPHSS, and Revan Tax. As the industry grows, their share of the revenue from the taxes generated by the program should grow as well. So this, again, is just trying to be proactive. You know, we see it time and time again where, you know, Senator, we need more resources to do this, and we need five people to do it, and they have to come to you every year to ask for that money. So this could be a proactive way for them to justify from a program that could be generating, you know, as little as $10 million in tax money, for them to justify what their portion should be. We don't think that cannabis is completely benign. Nobody is painting rainbows and butterflies here, as has been suggested, but what we do assert is that a regulated system for cannabis is better than what we have right now under prohibition. You senators have the tough job of weighing risk versus benefit. The World Health Organization has recommended cannabis for medical use be rescheduled under international treaties. And though the recommendation falls short of rescheduling for adult use, many experts agree that it is a political issue and not one of science. Cannabis legalization is contrary to federal law, not just here, but in all of the United States. It is also contrary to international treaties, including in the United States. But the landscape continues to change. The data is growing. Science is catching up, and after decades of restriction, and its impact is global, cannabis legalization is happening already. It's a different way. It's from the ground up. It's not from the top down, but it's happening already. We can choose to get in front of it and allow our island to make strides in this new and thriving industry as a leader in our region of the world, allowing our people to benefit from it and be pioneers, or we can wait it out and allow somebody else to take the lead and completely miss the boat. The people have entrusted you to make this decision for us. We humbly ask simply that you just make the most educated one. And that's our testimony for today. There are some citations here, also included from some studies, and also links to articles and studies that you can also review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pellicani. If I could ask you to stay up here in case we have any questions? All right. I'd like to also recognize Senators Telo Titegui, as well as Senator Luis Munya, and call up now Maganiti Roberto to speak.
The government of Guam, Howard Hem Singh. The government of Guam, it's a master. Hem Singh is a master. Congress. They are organic. They are organic. They are legalizing marijuana. They are a master, Congress. They are. 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 Any buyers?
Three weeks, that's it.
Hey, I'm not stealing. They are. They are. They are. They are. They are. [unintelligible]. 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 This is a drug. Man-made, it kills. Alcohol, it's a drug, it kills. [unintelligible]. 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 You understand what I said? It's fun to eat when you're stoned and you need money, right? At least you're not stealing. See? That's the beauty behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maganiti Roberto. I'd like to allow for Irene. Excuse me if I get your last name wrong, I can't quite make it out. Is it Emmanuel or Emmanuel?
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel. Please, you may, you may provide your testimony. Please introduce yourself into the microphone for, for the record.
Yes, my name is Irene Emmanuel and I'm a concerned citizen from the village of Dededo. I don't know much about the introduced Guam Cannabis Industry Act of 2019, but I'd like all, all of the lawmakers, the senators, to consider its impact, especially our case here in Guam with rising employment, unemployment, rising cases of crimes and violence in our community, and also the possible use of growing children such as schoolchildren attending public schools. I have been a school, I have been a teacher at Southern High School and I have seen cases where students are just sitting down there unable to do their work because they are so stoned. And if that's the case, it greatly impacts the performance, especially the achievement level of our growing students in the island of Guam. So although it has therapeutic benefits from its use, it's only temporary and it, the long term, it probably requires higher dose to produce, to produce its treatment in the debilitating cases of cancer, heart disease, and glaucoma. The revenue that can be obtained from the cells of it may not be enough to address the social illnesses in our communities such as adolescents, stealing, thieving, partying after midnight, getting pregnant. So those have to be considered, so I want all of you to consider its social impact. That's it. Thank you for giving me the chance to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Emmanuel. Mr. Troy Ignacio?
Oh, please turn the microphone on. Okay, can you hear me now? Yes, please introduce yourself.
My name is Troy Ignacio, I'm from the village of San Arido. I was a, what do you call that, active duty member since 2008, currently came back to Guam and all that after residing in California for two and a half years. For two and a half years I was in California, I took part of the industry over there when I was actually Alma, Prop 215, 64. So I saw the whole turnaround with the whole industry taking part of the economy and everything that upscale to the downfalls of everything. So I have a lot of experiences as far as knowledgeable experiences in indoor cultivation, extraction, and all that, as far as strain information, basically what, what strain or type of cannabis is useful and all that for medical patients. Now with the whole aspect of the whole cannabis stuff, I'm all for it due to the fact that even though it's temporary relief for most people, that's all they actually look for because of the fact that yet nothing's actually permanent. As you speak of, you know, like, you know, glaucoma or things like PTSD, which I suffer from daily and all that, which yet to us, to the, to the aspect of the individual though, it's all by the required personnel's use of what they feel that is necessary and needed for their consumption. Now with the whole recreational ideal though, Senator, because I've been wanting to meet with you for so long about this, the fact that I was there in California when I saw the whole Prop 64 took place, to be honest with that, it tanked the economy and stuff like that as far as like with the whole monetary game with Prop 215. Prop 215 and all that, people were making money as you can speak from dispensaries to growhouses to, to individual private cells and all that with labeling to, what do they call that, testing and everything, but when Prop 64 came in, everything started to decline as well shops started to close down because of the fact that yet it got out of hand and by me and my gang out of hand and all that, there were just unauthorized retail shops, growhouses opening up in places that are actually, that were supposed to be actually documented or actually undocumented. And with that and all that, over the state line sales were actually, you know, happening a lot frequently that people would travel beyond state lines to, you know, to gain access to the whole, you know, cheap cannabis, which I have to speak, but the whole aspect of this thing is not the whole recreational use of who can use it because even though if it's even introduced medically, the people of over 21 will still have access to it medically though. The restrictions of having to put, what do you call that, recreational in there and stuff like that will prevent the unauthorized use such as schools, you know, school students, unauthorized growhouses that yet people will, will and will set up and all that, you know, you know, on a company based on being, based on anonymity, just to make that few dollars and all that, you know, because they know that yet the whole product here and stuff that retails for itself at a valuable amount. But yet with recreational though and all that, man, with Senator Luis Munia's own introductory through her bill and all that, I mean, if you gave that a little chance of how we actually could play out the medical aspect of it, believe me, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to push the recreational aspect of this because yet you, to having to introduce it to the whole economy locally and all that, you can still, you can still introduce it to the whole industry of, about the whole tourism, having to utilize it medically and still have to make money and stuff like that by having them go get referrals from public health and all that, but with the whole recreational thing and all that, we may not just, who knows? Instead of having to build up an economy and stuff like that, we might end up just tanking an economy that yet pretty sure and stuff like that, you know, I want to see whether there's any plan drafted in cases of that such economy does decide to go through a downfall, what's going to happen there? Well, see the thing is, we speak of medical and all of that, but we haven't gave Senator Luis Munia's own, what do you call that, bill that was actually signed into law and a chance to prosper, you know, I mean, to be honest, like I said, I took part in the whole industry in California from Alma, Prop 1564, I seen it all, you know, that, but yeah, how many people here on the island could you actually say that, could you actually, people could entrust to grow their own medicine though, without having to actually, you know, undergo, you know, a lot of health issues and stuff like that regarding, what do you call that, you know, highly, highly, you know, induced of cannabis due to pesticides, pesticides, all those, all those, what do you call that, chemicals inducing to cannabis, trying to control pesticides and stuff like that shouldn't be used in an indoor cultivation setting, but same time, how did they know they're going to get their medical cannabis based on the fact that yet a grower that just 21 years of order, I mean, he's 21, he can grow, how, what did they know how to, 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 to provide, you know, adequate, you know, medicines, something that to, you know, aside from poisoning of people that are actually looking for this type of temporary relief? How does it go about there? Also as well, people are facing judicial implications, parole, probation, what protects them though and stuff like that from actually being put, thrown back into prison and stuff like that because they're residing 300 feet from their cultivation, what do you call that, home? Who protects them? Nobody. So you see, aside, aside from the benefiting aspect of this, because I can tell you, there's a lot of benefiting ways to, to benefit from this locally, touristically and as far as with their, with their economy, which we depend on tourism highly, you know, I can, I can tell you guys how to do it, but it's just that the fact that what's going to protect the people though from things like this when things such to arise such as, you know, crime rate, you know, undocumented growhouses and all that stuff, you know, you know, people, you know, coming in and out of villages and stuff like that, unexplained hours, what protects them? So we, we get the fact that yet we all know what, what the island wants and needs and wants to try, but how do we go about the safety first as far as everything, because everything could be written down here, you know, do's and don'ts, but what's going to protect them though? Because as far as about it and all that, takes quite a minute for police to get to your own villages and stuff like that, especially in a 911 call, what more of this? But like I said, Senator, you can still make money the way you want to medically in the medical industry as far as, as far as pushing medically, but recreational, hope you got a plan for something and stuff like that that happens when yet this industry decides to take a tank and all that stuff, oh, because the fact that yet tourists, not all tourists smoke, smoke weed, not all tourists want to get high, not everybody wants to live in Amsterdam, not everybody wants to party in Amsterdam, some families like it here and stuff like that, but yes, aspect, where the tourism is going to use the medical cannabis then if it does go recreational, where? Hotels, I'm pretty sure that's not going to happen, public areas, they have no place. There is no, there's no appointed area to actually utilize cannabis if this actually goes into effect, but over the medical part, your own home, your own home, if you're a private residence, something that, I'm pretty sure a lot of people who actually are pushing for, to have the medical aspect of this, everything's all done at home, which that's all we, that's all they want to do, is just utilize what they got to do to take their temporary relief and utilize it at home, privately and discreetly, but yet like I said, who's going to protect the people and what's going to protect the people when you decide to go recreational with the whole, the whole aspect? Because to be honest, there's no such thing as recreational marijuana, and I'll pious with you, there is nothing. No such thing. But like I said, Senator, if you guys are interested in something that and wanting to furthermore, you know, introduce the new billing and stuff like that, that will benefit not just the island of Guam and not just, not just the government of Guam, but the people of Guam, we'll sit down, we'll talk.
Thank you, Ms. Ignacio. So just to explain a couple, clarify a couple of things, part of the idea of this bill is that it would help patients get access to it, that's the whole point of it. We have a medicinal pro, medicinal law that went into effect that actually hasn't been implemented yet, there's many different stumbling blocks for it. Part of the goal of this bill is to remove a lot of those stumbling blocks to it, and so that's the, that's one of the main drivers behind this bill actually, is to remove stumbling blocks and allow patients to be able to have access to it. Yes, there will be some concerns, nothing's perfect, so we have to weigh the positive with the negative, and I believe the positive affects far outweigh the negative if we regulate this industry properly as you were saying, and if we ensure that there aren't illegal growhouses as you're saying, and you know, currently there are illegal growhouses now that get busted in the news, and I think we should instead bring those guys into the forefront and have them be taxed and regulated so we can start to capture some of the revenues from a market that's already flourishing here on Guam as has been mentioned by some other people provided testimony. But with that, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues if they have any questions, comments, or concerns? Anyone?
Senator?
Sure.
I have one more thing to bring up and all that stuff, which this is very, very important for most and stuff like that, they're actually looking to actually, I guess you could say, start their medicinal, you know, grow, is how's island going to obtain actually the seeds to actually bring in and all that stuff for the medical patients? Where are they going to get their, their cannabis seeds? Where, who are they going to source out as far as for, you know, seeds that are actually bred medicinally because they are, because I do have a lot of connections in mainly regarding breeders that breed cannabis, but nowadays and all that, it's no longer bred for medicinal uses, bred for, there are the whole use of just personal enjoyment, but the whole medicinal stuff, where your resources going to be at? Where, who are you going to source medical cannabis from and with that and all that? What percentage of medicinal, what do you call that, cannabinoids are you aiming at to bring in as far as to have supply the island and because there's different aspects with the medical, because it's not just CBD that actually, that defines and stuff like that, the whole term with medicinal cannabis is actually is the amount of THC in the cannabis because for a person to, to be inducively high in a, in a state where couch locked and they're, they're tired and sleepy where they can't drive and stuff like that, it's anything greater than 10% really, but medicinal CBDs and stuff like that and all that range anything from anywhere higher than 5% CBD, anything lesser than 10% THC and stuff like that, your body is consumed at least an ounce of it to get hot. So with that and all that, where is the island going to get its supplemental, what do you call that, I guess you could say distributors or where are they going to get their seeds to bring in and how it's going to be brought in knowing the fact that yet it's still kind of like federally legal to send these medicinal seeds through the USPS, postal mail, FedEx, DHL and all that, so how's that going to come about?
Yeah, that's a good question. So currently, you're, we're not allowed to import seeds, so even with the medicinal law that's in effect right now, when I've spoken to the people of public health who are working on implementing the medicinal marijuana, they've said that the seeds would just be from whatever seeds are currently here on island because they know that there are seeds here on island.
Then that went, then, then with that's the case, Senator, and stuff like that, then those would not be actually defined as medicinal then. There is no way sustaining that yet, seeds that are currently here on the island are actually medicinal, because anything medicinal and stuff like that, like I said, it is tested in laboratory, not just for the amount of pesticide use, but for what content it actually has and all that, to what cannabinoid percentages does it actually obtain for it to be medicinal, because anything that has greatest amounts of, like I said, I seen greater amounts of 30% THC, 0% CBD, what's the medicinal factor there and stuff like that aside from being lucid? If we had CBD, it's the main proprietary component in cannabis that medicinal patients do need, that yet suffer from all these elements, trust me, because I know this, I know this because I studied this in California for two years, I took part in the industry like I said, to getting the seeds here, it is going to be the biggest problem that yet you guys going to face, but yet having to say, we'll just use the seeds on the island, who, does anyone know that those are actually medicinal, qualified for a patient? I highly doubt it, I highly doubt that. So how do we go about trying to get this started without having the right, the right tool to do it? I'm pretty sure, you know, you can't put water in a gas, in a car that takes gasoline and all that stuff for it to go, how you expect this to kick off and stuff like that if they don't have the, the right, the right strain to bring in for the medicinal needs for the, for the medicinal patients that they need?
Sure. Well, I disagree. Currently, people are using it to medicate, so there is medicinal quality here on the island because people use it to medicate already. I've, I've heard testimony from people who today have said that they medicate with marijuana currently, so that means that there, there are strains here on Guam that can be used for medical purposes, but thank you, I understand your concerns and we will take all that into consideration. Thank you. Thanks. Sure, Andrea?
There was something that I forgot to mention and I didn't include it in my testimony and I didn't have the time on my way over here to review the bill. You had Matt Geiger in, in the morning session talking about a lab, and I didn't hear all of it, and I wasn't sure if I heard discussion of owning a vertical operation and a lab, and, and so that led to the question of is that, I, I may have overlooked that in the bill, but a lab should not be commingled with any sort of cannabis business. It's, it's a huge problem, it's unethical. So if you own a cultivation facility and you own a lab, what are you going to do? Fail everybody else? Fail your competition out? It's completely unethical. And so there is language in the medical 333-220, very, of course, it's not foolproof, I'm sure there's holes in it and there's ways around it as savvy businessmen will find ways, but there are, there is very extensive language in there that prohibits anybody who owns a lab or has an investment in a lab to also have an investment in any other cannabis business because it's completely unethical and, and it could actually really damage the industry. So I just wanted to make sure, because when I heard that this, this morning, I wasn't, I realized it was an oversight on my part that I need to go back and check, and so I just wanted to get that on the record, it needs to be independent.
Thank you, Ms. Pellicani. Mr. Antonio Soswiko?
My name is Antonio Soswiko, I'm currently residing in Cincinnati, I happen to be here, I'm leaving on Saturday. Maybe God sent me to be here this moment, not when I scored 113 points in one game, not when I won back-to-back gold medals, not when I was voted one of the recipients of the Millennium Award for basketball, none of that matters to me. When it comes to the issue that we're discussing now, I agree with it. When the servicemen started coming back from Vietnam. When the servicemen started coming back from Vietnam. Not only did they bring seeds, but back then, the post offices were in the village. My high school buddy had two duck full bags, four big speakers, sitting in a post office. After we ran out of stash from the other boys, we decided to go get whatever was in the box. I didn't know, but I can ask. I'm, I'm not done. Anyway, to make a long story short, back then, the federalists would just tell you, back up your truck, off you go. We started growing marijuana at my uncle's when I was 13, inside the Cariso fields in the wetlands down at Bejao Ague. If you guys don't know where Bejao Ague is, it's right after Finili, in between Uman. Anyway, marijuana has been my main medicine for the, for, throughout my life. And I'll tell you how it brought me to this very moment. I spent my mom's last six years with her. I switched her medicine from Perkset, Perkadon to marijuana. I threw in the water leaves and, and the roots. First cup that I gave her, she drank it. Soon after that, she asked for a second cup. Halfway through the second cup, she was already wiggling in a chair. I asked her, Mom, how are you feeling? And tomorrow, Ile human my pureizer, ma lixin inteku, le kuzo peta lu sin temu, le nga nyala ngu. Le ku mom, ta mena inu bumom boka, le nga hana wa tu ge fegun, zuna tilik, zuna mai pi ta lu ikadu. Databoka, le ku mom, toja 10 minutos bumokai, le nga nyala ngu ta lu, le ku ai, sanina ziamku ni monchis. Anyway, I documented all that. I grew up a serengeti kid in Ague. My grandmother was a healer. My mother was a healer. My other side grandmother was a, I don't know, but she's one of those. One person, but there are three of them. And one cannot tell on the other, otherwise all of them go down. You know what that person is called? Me, myself and I, one person. So going back to my roots, so I was a runner for medicine. I know up to now what combination of medicine, uh, to use and for what purpose. My last trip here, mom arose from up there by the old hospital. She was asking me how I can find a particular local, uh, medicine. And that medicine is called Subukau. Subukau is used for multiple purposes. But the main purpose is to treat trauma, people that get traumatized in combination with halinunu, uh, titimu, all those other stuff. So I know all that. Five of my mom's ingredients are registered at the University of Guam. I know exactly where those, uh, uh, medicines. The medicine used to grow out of nowhere, behind our backyard. When she died, they stopped growing. My sister, who recently retired from the US Attorney's Office, recognized the importance of marijuana in my life. After 30 years, she retired. I waited for this moment, because I realize how sensitive the subject is to her personally. And the fact that she knows that I use marijuana for treatment. And I know that because when she found the plants that I told my mom to grow in between her tapioca, they were ready to flower. My sister came over and she says, Mom, what are those back there? I says, I don't know, Tony gave them to me. He said, they're beautiful flowers, but they smell real good, but no flowers are coming out. My sister said, Mom, marijuana no. Gun magatso ni federalis, matuliguma mu, makalaboswa. Ma, ma bisisitaw gato pa gugi pishinoro, federalis na mapungyo. Put in noa, itinano, dagin nas duos. Sekin apuntu nas suda. Humon para behono para metri Philippines medical, malefoni zoku passport. Uzo u gi las duos gi stama, hano gi lansoku, zontuli u zoku passport. Ababa gi ma, trenta marijuana, nee ajitri monsa, nesta mana apu, pau pau pau. Adiliber ulu gi airport, le nga Antonio. Put ya un na si sidbi ti lu i marijuana. Lo, suka tumia lu it, da ki na si sidbi zupa omut, bena mapu. And she has that power. She retired as Nymtako, Fred Black. Her name, my dear sister, baby sister, who protected me. Is Salome Soswiko Blas, US Attorney's Office. She kept me out of jail, because, not because she loved me, but because she knew that marijuana was my only chance of survival. I need to take a break now, because my condition requires it. But before I take a break, let me, uh, tell you this, that when I come back, my testimony is not either pro or against. I already told you, I've been growing marijuana since 1213. We were the first group that brought in seeds from Amsterdam. Flavors, AK47, bubble berry, blueberry, push. I can name the houses where we grew those. Instantly, in five months, our crops EC 300,000. Now why did we have to take the risk when we can pass a bill that allows us that are qualified to grow it freely? Plant the seed, rainwater. I'm one of the OGs, few remaining OGs. We learn that marijuana is the only plant you can uproot, leave it out in the sun, get toasted, and we have the knowledge as taught to us, not by books, but by experience, to bring that marijuana back to smokeable form. If you don't believe it, let's go to my ranch, spend five days. I will welcome you. But when I come back, my testimony is not about pro or against. It's on a defensive side, because I have just gone through a very long and punishing and draining battle regarding marijuana. And if Gulf Guam does not know the law and are not prepared, I'm only one case. If you pass the law, and I'm already stating I'm not against it, but be prepared. Because right now, I'm at the tail end of a federal case where the findings of my doctor off island, where marijuana was detected, was used against me. And I won the federal case under the EEO rights and the ADA rights. I will tell you what my disability is and how the federal government breaks it apart in a pie. It's 100 for a complete pie, 15 for PTSD, as an example, 15 for bipolar disorder, 15 for manic depression, then all the way to 100, various. I scored according to the federalist, 92%. I'm only 1% away from the next level without medication. And part of the main medication that, of that is marijuana. That next step for me in my brain states is the state of schizophrenic. I am testifying right now here, not with the help of Western medicine, of which my daughter flew in last night from Cincinnati to make sure that I stay balanced. If you know about medication that controls serotonin, they go up and down. That's why they call it bi. When I'm high on high, I'll be up for days. But when I crash, I'll be crashed for three days. No sound, no light, no food, nothing. Then I realize I'm alive. I go through depressions where 15 days, I'm afraid to look at myself in the mirror. It's hard. I am proud to say, yeah, baby, I survived. Men to be honest, I'm the oldest living outpatient back then, mental health. When, uh, up to now, I'm a consumer. When I come back on island, I check into Sagan Mommy. Whenever I'm bothered with this door we will wall, which is totally different to me, that's my escape. They have a quiet room. They have counselors that know me. Even though my roomies are snoring or like this, they welcome me with love. We all welcome each other with love. They look at me and they say, sir, you don't look like you're sick. And I said, I might be sicker than you. So do not judge a person on how you see him physically. Judge him by how he touches you. If he touches your heart with kindness, and those are the ones that you want to be friends with. Timeout, I gotta go kill a big roach in my car. If I can only remember where I left it last.
Thank you.
I used to be old school. I'll carry around a box. There's two uses for boxer matches. Take out the box, put a hole, and that's your roach skip. You stash your roach in there, so you find it every time. Lesson, old school.
Thank you, Mrs. Soswiko. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to testify, that signed up?
Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. I happened to be on island and the talk was medical marijuana. Of course, um, I know automatically I qualify under every category. So I stopped by at Exxon gas station, got the newspaper, read the front page, marijuana. Between that and down to Paseo, I parked by the beach, looked out at the ocean, faced the wind, and I said, talk to me when, tell me what you want me to say about this. And this is what I wrote. And this testimony is just partial. Tina Munya Barnes has its entirety. This was my testimony, the last town hall meetings yet. I titled this, I wrote it in five minutes. It's called Smoking in the Dark. It's like undercover. Back then, it starts all at this.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to say that, um, your testimony was probably one of the most enlightening testimonies here. And, and I really appreciate you coming out and no disrespect to, to the usual advocates who come out and testify. But that's one of the reasons why I, I was really interested in, in sitting here, because I wanted to hear from the different members of the community to come out and talk and speak about their own experiences. And I think one of the reasons, one of the things I really wanted to ask you is, um, you know, I wasn't quite sure whether you were for, uh, adult use or, or, because like you said, you, you already have your,
If you.
Your garden grows already.
Did not catch my message. I grew it. I use it for medicine for myself, for my mom, my aunties, my uncles. I use it in my travels, in competition to Tahiti, Fiji, everywhere I went, I had to have it. It made me a professional smuggler. Thank God I wasn't caught. I had to take that chance. Either go crazy without it or go to jail. Either way, I'm going to die slowly. I'm totally for medical marijuana or whatever. All I'm saying is regarding my experience with my own case, the government have to be prepared for the liability. They should know and have SOPs in place already, that you cannot, one, use a doctor's record, a, a patient or employee against him. It's a federal crime. It's a basic crime. I'm not challenging. I'm not challenging what you guys know or your level of education. I only managed to go past junior college in Seattle. Two years, I went to school at Seattle City College. I played basketball there. I got the travel. I was there second week. The Black Panthers came in, shut my school down. I didn't know the hell was going on. I'm from Liro Island here. I don't know. I thought they were Boy Scouts. The same group of Black Panthers hooked up with the West Coast from Oakland and went and captured Patty Hearst. I was right there. So I was traumatized even more. You know, they didn't find out. When they found out in the mid-'70s about my condition in Hawaii, my buddy and I, he went through what the VA has to offer regarding treatment for PTSD bipolar. He wasn't satisfied. So we tried that experimental program. We were desperate. They were giving us medication at random. It was a scientific study. You never know what they're gonna give you. Sometimes it's gabipatin, neurontin, all those psychotic drugs for schizophrenia. Sometimes then they're testing you and they're evaluating your response, your reaction, both physically, but more importantly mentally. They put us to sleep to study our brains. After all that, they still didn't have medicine. Medicine for PTSD and bipolar disorder up to 20 years ago are just servicing. Even up to now, they haven't specialized the field yet. And there's a lot of people that are affected with some sort of mental illness. The strength that a person that's affected with mental illness that leads his path to survival is his belief that he can wake up the next morning and face another day. It could be worse. It could be better than yesterday. But at least you're alive. My friends that have the same condition, they're all gone. They either committed suicide, self-impictive wounds, some find a way to disguise their death from their families because they didn't receive the right treatment. Now, if you see Uncle Pepe in the corner that came back, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and he just wants to stay at the corner, Uncle Pepe needs help. He needs some love. It's not that he wants to be left alone. He's seeking out who's gonna be brave enough to give him some love. That's what it's all about. This bill can lead us beyond our imaginations. Three years ago, I went to Amsterdam. I talked to all kinds of people, eight days there. And you know what? The final stages that make the difference of yes or no? It was the attitude of the people. If you're pro, you can stay. If you're not, they're gonna put pressure on you to the point where you're out of there. In Amsterdam, one vendor passed on down, three generations. Only a little spot, only selling Price and Coke, but they're selling these bands with Amsterdam marijuana. They send that family, three generations of kids to Ochsner just from sales of the van. Three generations, the top school on that side of the world. We have the potential to do that. We do not have to go, if there's still resistance with the medical side, there's a different approach. I've been told what the different approach is. I'm letting this committee go into as far as it can get with the contributions from everybody. I can testify that whatever I have told you is true. And then whatever I'm willing to tell you, when this is all done, I can, I've been told. I won't tell you who, but I've been told the formula of how to do this. And we benefit all the people without a dispensary. It's a code, the old concept of green revolution. Everybody grows, one central point, one distribution. Whoever wants to use, come in, come to one. Right now, according to Senator or Madam Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, who I understand this morning on her way to check her mom's status in Arizona, I pray, and I've been praying for her mom. I pray that she's fine. But once in a while, I lose my chain of thought. When I get excited, I have to control my breathing. One of the effects physically of my disability is that transmission from my brain to my vocal cord are not coordinating. I can tell already that if I sit here another two minutes, I'll be stuttering. So before I do that, let me say one thing. We all listen to Bob Rustaman. He says, "Smoke it. You will feel irie." I say, bouncing back, it's here. It's all right. You guys find a way to battle the Federalist. There is one candidate right now that, one of our campaign promises is to make it legal in all the states. Right now, it's only legal in 20 states. But if I'm following that candidate, and I'm making sure that Mike Siniklas is riding her ass that when that bill passes, that the territories mainly Guam is included. Otherwise, I'm gonna be riding Cincinnati, looking at Mike. I'm gonna get on that plane, and I'm gonna tell him, "Boy, I didn't tell you all those stories about the March to Meningon." I told him miracles that my mom experienced. He was captivated. I'm gonna tell him, "All those stories that I told you were all a lie." Thank you very much. Time for me to go and,
Thank you.
and get some air and some irie.
Thank you, Mr. Soswiko. Thank you. Mr. Troy Torres.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Troy Torres, and I'm here to testify in favor of Senator Rigel's bill to legalize weed. And I just wanted to thank the senator for, I don't know, how many legislatures have there been? 35? Again, this is the 35th legislature, right? So 35 legislatures later, someone with some cojones had the audacity to come up with this bill. And that says a lot, I think, one out of 15. And for whomever supports this bill and votes for it, I would have to applaud you. Because, well, I'll start with a personal story. And unlike a couple of members of the panel, I won't pretend to know that I know what I'm talking about, about things I don't know what I'm talking about. But I will talk about things that I know. And I know about my own addiction issues. And when I was fresh out of high school, I was a pothead. I didn't finish college because I was a pothead, because I didn't have my stuff together. And I'm trying really hard, Andrea, not to, yeah, thanks. I didn't have my stuff together, and I just was a pothead. And no one was gonna stop me. Not the government, not my family, not my dad, not even Officer Maurice Sayama, who pulled me over at Pogget along with my friend, and we got busted for weed. It was a violation back then. That didn't stop me from smoking weed. When I got addicted to ecstasy and methamphetamine, no one was gonna stop me from popping a pill or smoking a pipe or sticking a syringe into my vein. No one, not the government. And actually, I detest the government for even thinking that it could take, it could arrange the role of the police. And tell the police whose role is, whose fundamental role is to stop one person from hurting another person. But whose job is it to stop a person from hurting him or herself? It certainly isn't the police's job, yet the government has made it the police's job to police people from hurting themselves. And when I talk about hurting, I'm talking about substance abuse. Substance abuse is the subject at hand, right? So I was a substance abuser. I was hurting myself. And so no one was gonna tell me to stop doing whatever drugs. I just had to come to that conclusion myself. And the reason I stopped doing drugs was because I wanted to look better. I wanted, because I'm a very vain person, I wanted to look better. And I wanted to not be such a nice person anymore. And I was nice on ice, and now I'm not because I'm sober. So let that be a lesson for the government and on the record, that the government has no business trying to regulate people and their personal lives. And I hate the government for being involved in people's personal lives. The government has no business in our homes and in our private property, in our thoughts, in our minds, and really. This is the consequence of the government being involved where the government shouldn't be involved. There's something called the Mandania Drug Task Force. The Mandania Drug Task Force, I know for a fact, is filled with police officers who have corrupted the system and have used the power of the police and the color of the law to infringe on the civil rights and commit crimes against ordinary citizens on this island who were just going about their business, doing their own thing in their private lives. They've stolen their money, their drugs, their cars. They brought them before the justice system to face penalties and to be humiliated in front of the public. And they violated their constitution on civil rights again and again and again. And I would really prefer if the police department and the Mandania Drug Task Force was brought before the legislature to answer for these allegations in an oversight hearing. But I digress. I know that's a different subject, but it is related to the subject at hand. And I'm just going to be quick and efficient here and say that that's all I know. And you can ask me any questions or whatever. I'll tell you about my whole personal life if you want. And thank you, Senator Rigel, and to any supporters of the bill. And to anyone who doesn't support the bill, I think you're just kind of full of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. I'd like to call up Mrs. Daphne Shimizu from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Are you also here to provide testimony?
Hafide, Senator Rigel.
Hafide. Please go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, before you begin your testimony.
Hafide, I'm Daphne Shimizu. I am the Acting Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Hafide, senators of the 35th Guam Legislature, thank you for the opportunity for me to come before you to provide some testimony. I'm here representing the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I do have testimony that is written, and we've provided that to the team here so that that way you can get copies of it. My team has actually spent some time reviewing. We also did provide information for the fiscal note. I'm assuming that you've all had the opportunity to read that. So let me just go through my written testimony. Buenas dan saludas. After review of Bill 3235, the Department of Revenue and Taxation is recommending that the following items in the bill currently be addressed. The first thing is, at a minimum, you know, we at Rev and Tax already face some issues with regards to funding. So if this bill is to pass, it's gonna be important that the issue of funding for enforcement, for training, and for our licensing divisions be addressed. The second item, which we found, as we were discussing, we also believe that the Department of Public Health and Social Services should be part of the board. There was a listing of the departments that would be involved, and we didn't notice public health, and so we believe that's important. Public health is critical as they not only have the responsibility of ensuring the health and welfare of our island, but they may already have compiled some vital information from other states that have legalized marijuana programs, and that could be useful for us. The other item that we wanted to address was also in providing, with regards to public health, that they be also involved in providing the initial clearances for licensing of the cultivators, manufacturers, and testing facilities prior to DRT issuing licenses. And that's not something that's unusual. That actually is something that is the case, for example, for medical clinics and things like that. There has to be some clearance from public health before those types of entities are actually licensed by us. The creation of the excise tax, what we are suggesting is that the creation of the excise tax should allow for Rev and Tax or the Cannabis Control Board to procure the seed-to-sale software used in many states and the necessary training involved to ensure the proper reporting from all licensees. That the issue of depositing the proceeds in an FDIC-regulated bank be addressed, as it is still a DEA Schedule I drug. And the last item that we had, which we believe was important to address or at least share with the legislature, was with regards to the Guam territorial income tax law, there is a limit on the deductibility of a majority of expenses other than cost of goods sold, and with stringent limitations for those engaged in the activity of the sale of marijuana. And so these are the items that we wanted to make sure that we shared with you, Senator Rigel, and your team, as you work to address and discuss this.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'd like to allow my colleagues to ask some questions if they have any, but I have one question. There has been talk out in the community when I've presented this bill, different venues when I'm speaking about this bill. One of the concerns brought up that I hear routinely is they say they don't trust the government to be able to regulate it and tax it. That's basically, they're saying they don't trust your agency has the capability to regulate this new industry and tax this new industry. Do you believe you guys are capable of doing that?
You know, what I can say is that I believe in our team. Do I believe that we have challenges in enforcement? Absolutely. There's a lot of resource issues that we have had. I believe, I've shared before in some presentations where even I believe, I've shared before in some presentations, where even in FY18, because of the fiscal realignment that had to happen, there were significant cuts made to budgets across the board, not just to Rev and Tax. And so, I mean, in terms of enforcement, in terms of licensing, in terms of, I think, not just our agency, but every other agency, we all face some challenges in terms of funding. So that's why the number one item that we put here is funding, because really, to do anything, we need to make sure we have the funding. We also need to make sure we have qualified people that can actually, that are competent in this area.
So with the support, you think you guys are capable of taxing and regulating this industry? With the proper support? Is that what you're saying?
I think with the proper support. And then, you know, as I was talking with our team, because we do have, we do regulate, our ABC regulates, of course, beverages, tobacco, things like that. And we were talking, and the main concern with our compliance team is this is really territory that we've not gone into before. But, you know, we believe with proper training, and actually, our compliance people or compliance person supervisor, he actually had received training. He traveled to Hawaii to receive some training in certain areas of compliance. You know, it's very important that we try to leverage the resources like that that we may have versus trying to reinvent the wheel. So if we get the proper training and if we have the proper funding, you know, I believe that we will be able to absolutely enforce. Now, I share with our team, you know, there's no way, I mean, even with regards to ticketing, for example, people who are speeding. Enforcement, it's almost impossible to do 100% enforcement, right? And so, and that's the challenge, you know. And, but I believe our team is capable, and I believe that as long as we have trained good, competent people, we could absolutely work on enforcement. And I believe in my team.
Okay. Thank you. Any other senators have any questions or comments? Senator Louise?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Daphne, for coming out and speaking on behalf of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I just have a question, because I know you just said that we didn't want to reinvent the wheel because there had already processes that have already been happening around the United States. But have you coordinated any, yourself or any of your staff with, say, for example, the CNMI, which already probably, they've already had it legalized for the last couple of months and still haven't really had anything going yet? So I don't know if maybe you've contacted them and found out what some of their loopholes were or some of their issues were as far as implementing the program?
No, we haven't, at least in the last couple of months that I've been at Rev and Tax. We have not communicated with other jurisdictions.
Okay, because I think they also may be having some issues getting it started. And they have also adult-use program that they had implemented a couple of months ago, and they still didn't have anything going. So I didn't know if maybe we can find out from them what some of their, you know, maybe some of their speed bumps are, which is slowing the program down that maybe we can learn from if this should pass.
Well, thank you, Senator Munia, for bringing that up, because I believe that that is absolutely a great idea, especially because there are just our neighbors who are just hundreds of miles away. So, you know, that's something that perhaps our team will look toward doing then. Thank you.
Senator Amanda Shelton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Shimizu, for your testimony today. I think that this is what a lot of us have been waiting to hear, especially because this is a proposed industry that we're looking to create revenue for our government. We want to ensure that it's taxed appropriately so that we are really collecting everything, or we would be collecting everything. And I'm just referring to the testimony prepared by Grassroots Guam. And one of the recommendations to the policy that they suggested was to create a division within the Department of Rev and Tax to specifically address recreational adult-use cannabis. And I was wondering if you think that that would be necessary or would it be something you would suggest be folded into alcohol and tobacco control?
Well, what I do know is that the law allows for the director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation to actually create another division within the department if there is need. At this time, though, I mean, I'm thinking at least, that's probably something that we're going to have to work to evaluate. You know, like I mentioned, we do have our compliance team. At this point, the idea is that we were, as we were talking about this particular bill within our agency, we were not contemplating at this time creating another division. But like I mentioned, it is definitely within the law for us to do so. And if there is a need, you know, we will down the line. That is something that can be done.
Thank you.
I'll go with Senator Boylan first. Senator Jim Boylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. It's very helpful. And I just wanted to ask on your item number four, can you kindly expand just a little bit more for me, reference to the seed-to-sale software?
I believe that in, within the bill, there is a reference to seed-to-sell. And to be perfectly honest, I'm not exactly sure how the seed-to-sell situation works, but I believe it's quite complicated. But that was actually one of the recommendations of our team. I'm not sure, Senator Rigel, if you're able to. I'm so sorry, because I'm not really very well-versed on this.
Sure, no problem. Yeah, the seed-to-sell is, there's different types of software that are being used for tracking in the jurisdictions that have legalized adult-use cannabis in places like the states of Colorado, Washington, Oregon, California, for example. So there's different types of software out there, but that's what they're using to track.
Right. But our point was that because that's part of the bill, that there would be some funding for it, perhaps through the creation, perhaps through the 15% excise tax or some other means.
Understood. Thanks. Senator Telo Tegwe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with us, thank you for being here to testify, especially in this area, because we know that this bill, you know, not only on a recreational side of it, but on a profitable economic growth to our island. You mentioned earlier, and I was going to bring it up, that you provided some input to BB Mar as they prepared the fiscal note for this. And I'm looking at the numbers in the back to try and figure out, where did these numbers come from?
So our team actually was trying to look for some data. And so I actually have, it's the National Drug Intelligence Center. It's a report that was put together by the U.S. Department of Justice. It's a little bit old. It's actually from 2003, but we wanted to use something that was actually, we believe was credible. In the most recent report that we found from the U.S. Department of Justice, it wasn't as detailed as this in terms of the actual, this whole section is for Guam versus what we saw, which was like 165 pages in 2018, which didn't have a lot of detail. It only had like one and a half pages on Guam. So this is the reference that we used when our team put together the fiscal note.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any of my colleagues have any further questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Shimizu. Thank you.
Sis Massey, Senator Rigel.
And I'd like to call up Mr. Justin Cruz.
Justin Jermaine Cruz. I don't even know how to start. Thank you. I guess it's just like taking, we can do a lot with this cannabis. You know, we can do so much, a lot. We can teach, you know, and I'm on live TV. So, you know, I plead the fifth on some things I don't want to say. But, yeah, we can, we can do a lot, you know. We can make money if that's what we really want to do. We can make so much money. We can, and we can teach. We can teach, you know. And if we teach, you know, there would be less burglary, you know, less crimes. We teach them, give the people what they really want, what they really need. And, you know, this, we need, we need this. And, you know, even if just money-wise, you know, people spend a lot on it. They do. They spend so much on it, and, yeah, sky's the limit.
So are you, just to be clear, are you in support of the measure?
Yes, I am, very much. It's, you know, like a big, like a big roadblock, you know, like. But, you know, we do it right and like really give patience and teach, really teach, you know. And I would love to teach, and I would love to teach and learn, you know. And, yeah, you know, there would be more crimes if, you know, if we didn't. And, yeah, we spend a lot on it. We do. We spend so much on it, and you can grow so much of it, like hundreds, thousands. You know, you can. Yep, I think that's.
That's fine. If you have anything else to add, that's okay. If you don't, that's fine as well, whatever you want to say. And does anyone have any questions of Mr. Cruz?
Thank you. I'm glad you're sitting there in the chair, because I do know a lot of people who are afraid of the ramifications of them sitting in that chair and things that, you know, may be held against them. So I appreciate your testimony. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you also for testifying. I know a lot of people are scared, I think, to testify. I think a lot of people are ashamed, and I think a lot of that's because there's been such a negative stigma attached to this plant. It's been demonized over many, many years. And through propaganda, people have been taught that it's evil and that it's bad, and it's got many negative effects when the data shows otherwise. And I think that's why it takes a lot of courage for someone such as yourself to come forth and testify. And I can see that, of course, you are nervous, and I commend you for coming forth and testifying. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there is anyone else here that would still like to testify, Mr. Fest?
Yes, once again, August Fest. Since the crowd is sitting out, I just had a couple of points of maybe rebuttal or reiterating from listening. The one gentleman, I didn't catch his name, and I think you kind of rebutted him about medical versus adult-use strains and everything else. Now, there's a study done by the National Center for Biotechnical Information. It's part of the National Institute of Health. I sent it to Dr. Akoma, tried to get him up to speed a little bit, and I sent it to the Board of Medical Examiners. This isn't from GetHigh.com. It's from the National Institute of Health. Says the entourage effects, and that means using all the cannabinoids, not just CBD, not just THC. It says all the cannabinoids used together are much better at killing cancer cells than used individually. Last few weeks, probably maybe the last month or two, I've been visiting the Chumaro Village with the sign. And it would seem that the tourists are very, very favorable. They're very friendly to the sign. They want their pictures taken with the sign. I'm sure this sign has done much more for legalization in Japan in the last month than it has anybody has done in the last 10 years. So any fears about this is going to be negatively on the tourist industry? I don't see it. I'm seeing friendly. I'm seeing thumbs up. I'm seeing peace signs. I'm seeing people come up to me and the signs, getting their picture taken. Woo-hoo! So just from a personal perspective, one thing I want to reiterate is try to make the law and the rules, when this commission is ever established, try somehow to make it malleable and adjustable as we go. Okay, this is what we wrote down. This is how it's got to be. Now, all of a sudden, it's a problem. We can't do this. Now we got to go back for amendments and this and that and the other thing. Somehow make this thing more malleable and adjustable, because you're going to make mistakes, and they got to be fixed. But the important thing is we want to move forward. We want to move forward fast. We don't want to hurt anybody, but we don't want to hurt the effort of bringing this forward. We want it for the people. We want it for the patients. And the government needs it for also tax revenue. That being said, don't make it so expensive on the fees and the taxes and everything else that businesses can't survive, because then you're just promoting more illicit behavior, which in itself isn't bad. It's just what comes with it. When somebody gets ripped off, somebody gets cheated, then that's where the violence and the crime comes in. This bill will help greatly for patients to have access to the medicine by sustaining businesses through the adult-use market. Homework, homework, homework is required for higher learning. Thank you. I did try to get ahold of Dr. Akoma many, many, many times. His phone is busy, 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 busy. He said he was going to try to be down here by, leave his office at 4:30. So I don't believe he'll have the chance. Thank you. And please, please vote yes for this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Fest. And with that, is there anyone else here to testify today? I believe we have at least one more individual signing up right now. In the interim, while we're waiting for this gentleman to take a seat, I have just received a testimony from the Department of Agriculture. And this testimony is from the Director, Chelsa Munia Brecht, from the Department of Agriculture. She submitted written testimony, and I'll go ahead and read that into the oral testimony. Actually, since this individual's here, please go ahead and begin your testimony. We'll start with you first since you're here. And if you could, please sit on the mic, introduce yourself, and then proceed.
Hafide. Don't mind if I'm a little nervous, but I'm going to try. Oh, thank you. So testify is just for me to talk my opinion about.
Please introduce yourself first.
Yeah, okay. So my name is Wayne Merrill, and I think from two years old through 18, I grew up down in Inarahan. And from there, went to college, proceeded with my career, family life, and stuff like that. But deeply know and feel that Guam is my home. So as you know, there's been a lot of issues that have been coming up about Guam and us and our community, really related to controlling our own destination and things like that. But today is about marijuana, and it just was a good way to come and talk about that. to come and talk about that point that ultimately relates to a lot of other things. So, um, I guess I introduced myself and then went right into starting. It's, it's okay. Um, I also have family and kids, and ranging the whole spectrum, uh, that's another story, but, uh, feel that, uh, it's not only from an opinion of me as an adult, but responsible for, uh, my children, elder and future growing up. So, on this topic, I guess this topic is, uh, are we deciding as a community to legalize marijuana for recreational use? Is that, am I correct, Derek?
Yes, this bill would be for adult use, age 21 and over.
Yeah, okay. So, um, at first, I just want to say, because as I talk, people might be wondering, am I for or against? And definitely, I'm for. So you can see, interpret maybe how I'm, I'm talking. Um, I really feel that, uh, as Guam community, there's already a certain, I'll just use the word underground, usage, but it's not necessarily, I never feel that it's underground, but, uh, it's just maybe you call it underground because the legally and the, the laws and the, doing the right way is not involved in it per se, other than from the criminal aspect. So, um, I feel that, uh, trying to get it out into the sunlight and maybe, uh, once that happens, that kind of gives the responsibility to responsible people to get all the guardrails in place and, and so forth, and because it was an action that is, was put in motion. Uh, I always feel, feeling that if we just, again, table this, is just reason or, not excuse, I, again, I'm not trying to say anything bad, but it's a reason not to set it to its proper priority. But by us approving it, it is making us to be more proactive and, uh, know, because, hey, it's ongoing and things. And, uh, I never really was into pot. I was a cross-country runner, uh, you know, National Honor Society, all those things. But, uh, believe me, all my friends never, let me hold that over them, and I never did. I never even thought of it that way because they're smarter than me in many ways. And I was the only one who knew I was a Howley. They all just thought I'm Chamorro. But, uh, so anyway, I'm, that's a little bit on introduction again. So, uh, I just feel that if we, we pass this, you can see that the community voted for it in, in a different fashion years ago, and there's a lot of stumbling blocks, and all of those are well-understood, but they're big ones. So by doing this, uh, it can kind of set things in motion. And I think the things that will be set in motion is good things, because, uh, marijuana's been around a long time. It's already a known fact, uh, and very comparison against alcohol and things like that. We, I don't need to state any of the statistics and stuff like the, the pluses or minuses. I'm sure you have all of this. I just was coming here because I want to get on with things, and I think get on with things means all the benefits from it. Uh, there are fringes of this that are very bad and some that all the way to very optimistic. But if you take the center 80%, I think, uh, though, that's the area that we can, uh, kind of benefit, and we're putting these guardrails. We'll have to deal with these other things. Uh, so, I am just saying, uh, it's just me, one vote, but, uh, saying that. And, uh, though I'm here and, and putting my opinion on marijuana, there was really other reason that really made me to feel this way to come in and say it, because, uh, maybe it was more of, uh, this is one area, because I know in the news, they said, oh, even if you pass it, the law and all that and all of these. And then that's what really kind of boiled me over to. It's, again, something from the outside is controlling our community when we should decide what's best. If, uh, um, we don't, if we decide not to, well, that's us, we decided. But if we decide to, and then all of a sudden, someone says, oh, no, you cannot. So, I feel like, go ahead and pass it, and let's push this, and let's find out who's telling us not to and what, and let's take the flag and run with it. Is this like a lot of, there was other recent event that was like that, you know, um, cockfighting. All of a sudden, someone from Ohio, Senator, putting in and deciding our, our fate on that. And, uh, it just doesn't seem like that's right. I mean, I'm not going over there or making laws here for them over there, so, uh, and again, it's not maybe, of course, I'm not really trying to justify the cockfighting, though even me, I thought, oh, soon that was going to die out because all the old timers are gone. But when I saw all the young ones and they're taking responsibility and they're really footmott about learning it and stuff, I was really set back and I said, wow. And then it really related to marijuana. This is a young person's industry, and these people will start their businesses, and maybe they'll learn better ways and do it grassroots way or formally, whatever. But no matter what, they're gonna be paying taxes on it. And you know where we are with that. And then related to the image of Guam and marijuana, um, I Saipan already passed it. The image is already there. So, uh, gambling is totally a different story, and we know the ill effect and like that. But marijuana, it's still, how are we going to turn it into the industry? And even with tourism or whatever, there's plus and minus, and some people, um, are a certain way, but others are more open to it. And we'll, again, we're going to find out. We, we're just, in a lot of ways, guessing until we put it into action. So, uh, I think that's about what I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your testimony. As we mentioned to the individual who came before you, I know a lot of people are apprehensive about testifying. It can be a bit, um, maybe scary for some people to go out on the public record and talk about this issue. So thank you for coming forward, and I appreciate it. If any of my colleagues have some questions, Senator Luis Munia.
Mr. Merrill, thank you very much for coming out. I just have a quick question because, um, you know, I, I run a lot of 5Ks, and I don't know if maybe you'd, you would know this, but there was a, a 5K that I ran, and, and this one runner came up to me, and he said that he smokes a lot of pot, and he actually runs a lot better when he smokes. Is that true? I mean, could that, could that be true? I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Well, at, at, at the time, uh, that I was in cross-country and in high school and stuff like that, man, I was, uh, even my first girlfriend is until I'm 21, and so I wasn't, uh, even experimenting into those things, because I was like, oh, no, that would impact my running and things like that.
Yeah.
I, I did notice one time I, for some reason, I had taken an aspirin. And, man, I, when I did run that race, it seemed to, I ran it so much smoothly. And I didn't take it because of that reason. It was for other reason, and later I connected the two. And reading and people and, you know, books and things like, about that.
So just for your reference of aspirin, maybe some people use marijuana as that same aspect, helps them run better?
It, it could be, but my feeling, if they did that, they would always be looking, how come I'm never getting to the finish line? So that's kind of one of the sensations.
Okay. I, I mean, I was just curious at that, that statement that was given to me, and I wasn't sure, you know, I, I, I didn't know how to relate it, the, the two, but, you know, as you, as a cross-country runner, I didn't know if maybe you would see what the effects could be.
Yeah. And I'm not a regular smoker, not at all, very, very, very rarely. But sometimes you get in the group and, you know, it's like that, you know, realize the situation.
It's like sharing a bottle of Johnnie Walker or something, right?
Yeah, and there's still certain things that, as a professional, that you, you know, really need to be away, away from those things, uh, and things like that, so.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Anyone else have any questions? I can maybe add to, before I, I go to you, uh, Senator Talahi, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I used to be, uh, an athletic in school, so, but let me just say that, you know, marijuana is a downer. So if you're in a relay, for example, actually, when you're, when you're high with marijuana, actually, all you want to do is relax. You don't want to run the mile. That's, that's all that I have to say about marijuana. You know, I, I graduated from the Drug Enforcement Academy in Washington, DC, and I, I am certified instructor for drug use and abuse, and, uh, I know a lot, uh, when I was back there, I know a lot about what marijuana can do. And at the time, even up to now, the feds are not in tools to really, uh, say marijuana is good. But for the longest time that I've been, you know, with, uh, with my life, long, long life, uh, and knowing about the good things and the bad, uh, you know, I think that this particular bill, 32, 35, not only that it would really infuse, um, the, the economy, but most importantly, um, you know, the, uh, the crime can lower, you know, there's a whole lot of people that have been arrested for, because, you know, I remember when I was in charge of Narcotics Division in the Guam Police Department, anything over an ounce is a misdemeanor, petty misdemeanor and so forth. And we did a lot of arrests on that one, and I know that, you know, there's no crime to that. I don't think there's any crime to, uh, having possession of less than an ounce. But again, I, the, the law really does say that if you possess an ounce of marijuana, you know, that is a crime. It's, it might be a petty misdemeanor, but it is a crime. So, thank you for coming.
Yeah, can I, can I respond, uh, again, if, if it's okay? So, back end of my answer again about the cross-country, I'm surprised that that's a, uh, interesting topic. But in all my, uh, running of cross-country, so, because, uh, just my Mr. Siniklis from way back from, uh, junior high school down in Inarahan said, run that hill 20 times and you'll be a champion. But from there, we, we just all loved it.
And I used to compete with Benny.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, all, what I wanted to say was, in all my time running and everything, and, you know, you know all the people, there was just one, and, uh, person that it was like, I think my senior year, related that if I ever saw that they were in the back, uh, smoking before the running. But everyone else, I never ran into that before. So, but that guy was the one that's really mean, even though you're running and you try to pass him, he'll try to push you back or something. But, uh, uh, but I never asked him what the effect, but eventually I could beat him still to.
But, you know, that was like 20, 30 years ago, when I used to compete with Benny, and at that time, we don't, we don't really know, uh, what's marijuana, if you will.
Yeah.
So, uh...
Yeah, so, I, I graduated from George Washington in 1978, so, like you said, long time ago.
Uh, 1978 is when I graduated.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Senator Talahi. Just to add to that, I know that, uh, I have read a lot of articles about some athletes do actually, uh, um, like to use cannabis, and they believe it helps, uh, enhance their performance. Um, one famous athlete, of course, is Michael Phelps, and we all know he got in a lot of trouble for it, uh, but he was a multiple gold medal winner. And there's a lot of articles online about other athletes who say it enhances their focus. And there's even articles that say it should be banned from athletics because it could be performance enhancing, because it's, uh, it can help enhance their focus in certain areas. So...
Not that I want to always have the last word. I'm going to let someone else say it, but I, it just brought up, uh, another topic. I mean, just to, to another reassurance of some things, it's just another data point. Um, I have a friend in, in San Diego, and he's into the medical marijuana. Not, I'm not associating him in any way and whatever, but when I do meet him, then I get, I see what he's doing. And it, it's amazing, their center, and it's really, just like, uh, back in the hippie days, where there's just all the love and everything, and you feel that sometimes. I'm like, is this really true or is it a front? But over time, I see that. And then also, there's sincerity about helping the people that have the pain. And of course, again, you have the people that they qualify because they just do, say, and to get the prescription and all that, and they're just using it for their social way. But in the reality, if you're helping those people really in need, I think that, so that, that's a, a big thing, and it, uh, we're going more to that kind of municipal medicine. It's a good idea as opposed to the fabricated one.
Thank you. Thank you again for your testimony today. And, uh, Andrea?
I just wanted to address Senator Munia's question. Um, THC actually in the lungs is actually shown to improve, uh, blood flow in arteries. And so, you know, I can't speak for the runner he's speaking about, but you, if you're looking for the link between the two, uh, maybe possibly pulling up a study on that, because it's actually, they, they make, um, inhalers. Uh, so that's one of the methods of delivery for medicinal cannabis for those with asthma and COPD. Um, so they put THC in the inhalers so that they could get it in their lungs. It's a delivery method. So, hope that helps.
Thank you, Mrs. Pellicani. Ms. Pellicani. And if there is no one else here to testify, John, did you have any more testimony?
I was just going to reiterate what, um, Ms. Pellicani said, because I do have COPD, and I, that, yeah, that's one of my diagn, uh, the, the medical conditions. I have sand particles still stuck in my lungs from places in the desert. But that's besides the fact. We'll blame the VA for that or other things. Uh, so, and I can attest that, that I feel a difference, at least in my, in, in my respiratory issues with, with the use of cannabis, which is kind of awkward because I, you know, smoking, I know that with the creation of the manufacturing and stuff like that, we can look into inhalers and moving into those, those avenues of, um, medicating, or those options for medicating. So, yeah. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savaris. Thanks. Uh, any of my colleagues have any other comments you'd like to make? Senator Kelly Marsh-Taito.
Half a day. So, um, I've had to go in and out because of meetings, and so, um, if I repeat something, please forgive me if it's been gone over before. So, in just looking up some of, um, what's available online and then trying to read, read through the bill again, to think about ways to strengthen it so that if it does go through, uh, we've tried to cover as many bases as possible. So some of the discussion that I was reading through had elements that spoke to, um, undetectability, especially around schools. So if there's not language there, um, I think that could be an important consideration. There is, I believe, where it says, if it's outdoors, it's in a locked outdoor area or facility. And so, that perhaps takes care of that issue, but I, I think that language could be important, uh, especially if somebody finds themselves in close vicinity to somebody who's a regular user. Um, that could be, if it's detectable, that could be, um, impinging on some of their personal space, uh, and personal rights, or it could be perceived that way. So I think that would perhaps be good to be looked at and, and see. And then I know that in the bill, it does mention... And then I know that in the bill, it does mention about not driving under the influence, but I did see that some places do also additionally spell out, and I think this is similar to the way that we treat alcohol, that you're not to drive under the influence, but additionally, you should not be having open containers in the car. So people also might be looking at vehicles as a place to not be in public, but be in private. And so they have, some of these areas, I think it was California was one of them, about not having consumption in vehicles. I mean, first of all, that could influence the driver, even though it's somebody else who's maybe consuming in one source or another. But again, areas to perhaps consider, the bill itself is very comprehensive, but if there are just a few ways perhaps to continue to strengthen it so that we've addressed as much as possible by the time it hits the floor, if it gets to that stage.
Thank you, Senator. Dr. Chris Dombrowski, would you like to provide some testimony?
How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir. Go ahead and begin by introducing yourself.
Long day today, huh? Well, my name is Dr. Chris Dombrowski and before I give my presentation, I'd like to tell you a story. And this story goes back 51 years, when I was 10 years old, 1968. I was in elementary school and I saw a National Geographic special on prohibition of alcohol and Al Capone. And at that day and age, watching a National Geographic special was a homework assignment in which we had to submit a paragraph of what we witnessed. Two weeks after I saw that National Geographic special, President Richard Nixon came on the TV live for a live news conference to start the war on drugs and initiated the Drug Enforcement Agency. And I remember thinking to myself, didn't these guys watch what I just saw last week? And the question that came out of watching that news conference was, if prohibition didn't work for alcohol, why would you think it would work for any other substance? And I've been asking that question for 51 years and I've never gotten an answer. So from then on in, I've been studying this issue of drug use, substance abuse, addictionology. So the question becomes, why do people use drugs? Why do people do drugs in the first place? From a clinical psychology perspective, endless catalog of reasons why people pick up to use or to ingest a substance. Genetics, personality types, self-medication for emotional pain, instant gratification, basic human need, curiosity, rebelliousness, peer pressure, family attachment issues, history of trauma, socioeconomic issues or stressors, availability, social and cultural influences, movies, music, The Beatles. How did Paul McCartney and John Lennon get from "I Want to Hold Your Hand" to "A Day in the Light"? What is drug use? What is the purpose of drug use? What are the effects of drug use? Well, basically from a neuroscience perspective, it's to alter one's consciousness, the alteration of one's consciousness. And what does that mean? Pleasure, pain relief, mystical revelations, stimulation, relaxation, joy, ecstasy, self-understanding, escape, another plethora of endless catalog of reasons. What is altered state of consciousness? Getting high, getting baked, getting stoned, getting drunk, getting shitfaced, whatever term you want to use for that altered state of consciousness. Another word for altered states of consciousness through the use of drugs is intoxication. Intoxication is correlated with altered states of consciousness. But I am here to tell you one thing. There is a natural force that motivates the pursuit of intoxication. And it's been expressed throughout history, throughout humanity, before humanity. To use substances and drugs is satisfying a natural biological urge. To alter one's consciousness is the fourth drive. A drive is associated with survival, satisfies primary biological needs. The first three drives are sleep, hunger, thirst, procreation. The fourth drive is to alter your consciousness. It is built within our human nature. You can't get around that. That is the reason why the war on drugs is an epically failed social policy, akin to slavery, profoundly failed social policy. It's great if you're in the criminal justice system because then you have job security. The pursuit of intoxication is no more abnormal than the pursuit of love, social attachments, riding roller coasters, jumping out of an airplane at 10,000 feet, going scuba diving, whatever it is that you like, that's your cup of tea. It's altering one's consciousness. It's the fourth drive. It's human nature. The fourth drive to pursue intoxication can never be repressed. It is biologically inevitable. Intoxication has occurred in almost every species throughout history. It is biologically We are not alone. This pattern of drug-seeking behavior is consistent across time and species. This universal drive to alter your consciousness brings up the coexistence of the molecular chemistry of drugs and the chemistry of the brain. And what I'm getting at are the receptors in the brains. We're here to talk about cannabis. Every one of us in this room, on this island, on this planet, has cannabinoid receptors in their brains. We co-evolved with the cannabis plant. There are some scientists who believe that civilization was slingshot through the use of cannabis, not through humans, through primates. Cannabis is safer than caffeine, nicotine, alcohol, and sugar. Cannabis is safer than alcohol, caffeine, nicotine, and sugar. Personally, I don't believe there's any such thing as recreational drug use. It's all medicinal. Show me a person on planet Earth that doesn't have an ounce of anxiety or stress from existential day-to-day life. Show me that person. Please. It's all medicinal. The term recreational was used by politicians for their moral benefit, to make other people seem inferior, specifically the blacks and the browns. The last thing I'd like to say, and thank you for allowing me to talk today, I apologize for not bringing that up, but no legal system, no legal or political system in the history of civilization has succeeded in changing human nature. Please don't think that you can. Please. Putting people in a cage for doing something that's so basic to human nature is profoundly You make, you take a sad song and you're making it worse. Don't try to be the first political entity that tries to change human nature. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Dr. Dombrowski. If you don't mind, if you could stay up here or do you have somewhere to go?
I could stay around and answer questions one-on-one. I am in a quandary as I do work for DPHSS.
Okay.
And I'll be glad to speak with everybody individually or in a group after the hearing, if that's okay.
Sure. Okay, okay. No problem.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Siswiko, I see you, but before, go ahead and have a seat up front, but before, I'd like to allow Chelsa Munia-Breck, the Director of the Department of Agriculture, to provide her testimony.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. I'll just read my testimony in, for the record, I do have to go after, but I'm glad and happy to have been able to make it here in time to give my testimony. I would like to offer testimony on behalf of the Guam Department of Agriculture in support of Bill 32-35, the Guam Cannabis Industry Act of 2019. As Director of this agency, an agency that is vital to the growth and evolution of our island, I applaud your effort to usher in a new economic industry for Guam. Your vision aligns with that of our Magahaga. She too recognizes then that when implemented with precision, this, this will provide a substantial boost to Guam's fragile economy. I respectfully offer the following recommendations for consideration by your committee. Subsection 8104A, number two, consider varying the quantity and degree of growth, for example, six flowering and six vegetative. Given that inclement weather and humidity impact health and quality of plants, one may easily lose all six plants in a very, in a single heavy rain. This frequently occurs with vegetable plants. Subsection 9103A, one member shall be the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation or his/her designee. And subsection 9103B, one member shall be the Director of the Department of Agriculture or his or her designee. Other than the recommendations above, I offer no further changes. The bill appears refreshingly uncomplicated and I look forward to working with the Cannabis Control Board on promulgating meaningful and effective rules and regulations. Sinema Asi, Chelsa Munia-Breck.
Thank you, Ms. Munia-Breck, for your testimony today. I'd also like to call up Mr. Tom Fisher. Thank you. Yes.
Does this gentleman want to?
You could go ahead and go first, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Siswiko testified earlier, so I want to allow you to go first and then Mr. Siswiko can speak again.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Senators, ladies and gentlemen. I am here in support of this bill. I think that it is, it's time to decriminalize marijuana, in fact legalize it for recreational use. My reasons for saying so, well, it's, they're personal, actually. About 16 months ago, I was diagnosed with cancer and underwent treatment for that cancer off island and then returned about 10 or 11 months ago. As a result of the treatment, the disease itself, you know, everybody's familiar with the impact of it and I went through radiation and chemo and so forth. But when I returned, I was not so much mechanically incapable of eating, I just had no desire to eat. So I began my treatment at 230 pounds and about 10 months ago, I was down to 170 and falling. And it wasn't that it was painful to eat, it was just that I had no desire whatsoever to eat. And the, the weight kept dropping off and the energy kept decreasing and I was in a downward spiral and I began using marijuana. Marijuana somehow magically flipped a switch in my head and made it palatable, it made it possible for me to eat again. And because of that, I began to gain weight. And when you began, when you begin to gain weight, you also begin to regain energy. And the recovery of the energy has led me so far to be in remission for a solid year and I, and I attribute that, it sounds perhaps a little overdramatic, but I attribute that in large part to the use of marijuana. And I don't think it's because I was in such a downward spiral, the fact that I am alive and here today, I attribute at least in part, you know, obviously to great medical treatment, but also the use of marijuana which allowed me to eat again, all of which sounds like an argument in favor of medicinal use of marijuana, which it is. But I think that the economic realities are such that, you know, one of the big problems with, with getting the medical marijuana underway was the fact that, you know, getting a lab to test the quality of the marijuana and so forth. I'm not sure that that would be economically viable here because we're a small community and I can't imagine what the investment is in setting up such a lab. So be it. If you allow recreational marijuana, it will also allow people who were, who are in my condition to use marijuana. And that extends to the people who are poor and uninsured, who have no access to medical care for a doctor's recommendation and so forth and so, and so on. So I applaud you, Senator, and the Senator, all the Senators who are in support of this bill as well as the Department of Agriculture and I appreciate the fact that the Magahaga is also in support of this. It's, it's time for this. It's both compassionate and it's also, well, we people can make the choice for ourselves, what we think is appropriate. So all I can say is, again, you know, had it not been for marijuana, I may not be here today. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, and I appreciate you sharing your message with us today. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Siswiko?
Thank you for your patience. Earlier I called timeout. Now I'm back. Different perspective, different person, same mission, as all of you, as all of these If we are going to pass this bill, the key thing is we have to all agree collectively. No push-pull, no push-pull. The formula is right there. We just need the right heads to put it together. My testimony earlier included marijuana in my life. It would always be in my life. I told you, I risked being arrested through countries that I, in the Western Pacific, in the Orient, because I needed it. There is in 2016 Micronesian Fair. I don't know if you... I don't know if you know, but I talked to some of my leader friends throughout my travels. Some of those islands, their fruits no longer are producing. The coconut trees are dry, I mean, fruits are dry. You know what they wanted from Guam to help them recover? Marijuana seeds. From 2016 to now, my chief friend told me, get your island ready because they completely recovered. Their natural resources were destroyed by climate change or other acts of nature or by humans themselves. They are struggling just like we are. Every island in the Pacific are struggling to survive. But no matter what island you are from, as long as you are being handcuffed, you can never move forward. Now, the only way we can totally move forward without fear is to change the status from contraband to yes, we can. Agree?
I do agree.
So if we have a vision like that, then the only stumbling block is us. If an island out there that their residents are already taking off because they're giving up, and then the chief introduced this plan. The plan that grew not only paid for the new soil, the new coconut, other vegetation that needed other fruits, all from the natural plant. And whether you believe it or not, we are helping our brothers and sisters in a way that can unify us all because of one plan. A plan that God gave to us. A plan that does not need instructions. Just put it in the ground, moisten it a little bit, put it on the right spot, and give it its blessings. It's ready to cure. So I've been after this battle to legalize at any form. There is a very, very bright economic reward for Guam, for our kids, for generations to come. It is time that we do it right. In my testimony, before I moved to Cincinnati, I remember one line. And a line or two lines. It says, if you do not decide soon, somebody else is going to be feeding me with a spoon. And I'm almost 70. I have no time to wait. If they want to arrest me for using marijuana as my medicine, I'm going to take them down before they touch me. That's how I'm going to defend my medicine. If we take that attitude, then we will succeed. We just have to take our time. You know? We just have to put checks and balances along the way. Halfway through, let's gather the troops. Let's see which direction we're going. In the end, there's another 10%, 15% to crystallize, to make all the loopholes disappear. Therefore, the avenues open. Let the world and the Pacific Islands and our brothers and sisters that have left Guam for the healing of medicine. They're all in Washington State, Arizona. There are now 28 states. California most recently. I was there for Thanksgiving. Northern California, in the grapevine, which produce millions of dollars, are no longer the number one product. It is the marijuana trees that are growing in between the wineries. So eventually, that direction is towards take marijuana, taking over a billion-dollar industry. So the grapes, now they don't care about the grapes because one marijuana plant can take care of 20 grapevines. You do the math. We know the solution. We know the way. And the way is to pray. Thank you. I won't be back on island until maybe three or four months, but I will keep in touch. Thank you for your kind attention. God bless all of us in this mission. To completion. Jesus Christ.
Hugomast, thank you very much, Mr. Suswiko. And with that, if there are no, is there any further testimony from anyone? If not, we will go ahead and recess until more people arrive. Again, the public hearing will continue until 6:00 PM. But we will take a recess now until such time that there's, there are more people here to testify. So thank you very much.